Good morning. I would like to call to order the Brighton Central School District Board of Education reorganizational meeting for July 10th, 2018. The first order of business is the election of the Board of Education President for the 2018-2019 school year. Are there any nominations for office of the president?
I'd like to nominate Mark Kakanovich.
A second. Okay. So, Mark Kakanovich has been named President of the Board of Education for the 2018-
We have to vote.
Oh. May I have a motion to second? We already did that. Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Are there any nominations for the Office of Vice President?
I nominate Julian Gilbert.
I second the nomination.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Julian Gilbert will serve as Vice President of the Board of Education for the 2018-19 school year.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kim, for starting us off. Thank you to the board for returning leadership, I guess, to place. So, we'll begin, if we would, a motion, please, to approve our agenda for today.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Marv. Approval, please, a motion to approve the minutes from our June 12th business meeting.
Do you want to vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll-
We're out of practice.
We're out of practice.
Approval of our agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Marv, appreciate that. A motion, please, for approval of the minutes from our June 12th business meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Larry. Any additions, corrections, deletions? Technically, Christina would be not voting on this one because she was not present at that meeting, but everything else is good from there, so.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I make comment to folks who may be watching us either live or on rebroadcast, today is our organizational meeting for the year, so we have a number of items in the beginning of the agenda that are only appear at this point in time that set a bunch of organizational requirements for the district for the upcoming year, and we'll work through those. And then we do have a business meeting portion of the agenda with a few other items, so we'll begin working through that right now. Agenda item number 5B, may we have a motion, please, to approve the appointments for 2018-2019 that are listed under that section?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, I'm not opposed.
Well, you're right, we should've-
We've got some things from the board that we need-
Let's do that. You're right, Marv, thanks. We didn't designate, so what I would add to that is, we had item number 28 under letter B, we should've discussed this. Representatives to Monroe County School Boards Association committees, and the discussion was around keeping pretty much our standard, what we had been serving for this point in time, and those of you that I checked with were agreeable to that. So Legislative Committee, Karen and I would continue to serve, Labor Relations, Marv and Andrea would continue to serve, and remember, any of us certainly can attend any of these things. An Information Exchange Committee, Julian and Christina would be added as representative to Information Exchange. Genesee Valley School Boards Institute, Marv, you had agreed to continue that role. Representative to PTSA, that would continue to be Karen and Andrea. And then Representatives to Individual Brighton Schools, which we always designate as a committee of the whole, unless anybody feels the need to change that. We can discuss it, we have discussed it time to time. With those additions or those designations, then I would ask for, let's revoke, how's that?
Yeah, sure.
All in favor of those items through number 30?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next up, under letter C, authorizations continue for 2018-2019, and these are a number of district officials and legally required functions. The authorizations begin with C1 and go through, let's see, C11. And may we have a motion to approve that Section C, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Andrea, seconded by Larry. I will make just one quick comment, and we'll talk about it a little bit later also. Item number 2, construction change orders. We've talked about this, and we're going to talk about it a little bit further, that we did make a change, and you'll notice there's a policy change later, so that the district audit committee can authorize the administration to proceed on change order work. That would be pending Board of Education approval, and that was done, we discussed it at the end of June, to be able to keep things moving on all the different K-12 modernization projects that we have going on. And you'll notice there's a policy change incorporated into that later on when we talk about policy. So with that, does anyone else have any comment or question within those items up to number 11? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Letter D, a motion, please, to designate the official newspapers as outlined.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Julian, seconded by Karen. Again, we have to designate the official newspapers, and you see those there. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then letter E, approval, please, a motion to approve the bond for our treasurer and our school business official?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So those are the items that we designate, and we also have a few others that you'll see in our consent agenda that do get designated once a year at the beginning of the year. Section number 6, approval of bids, we have three different bids. May we please have a motion to approve the bid for science supplies and equipment for Brighton High School, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Julian. This is the first of three bids that we're going to discuss, that we have as prepared by Lou. Pretty straightforward information here, supply, this one for science supplies and science equipment. Does anyone have any questions or comment on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then we have two more bids, one of both cooperative bids through the Bosie Service. Motion, please, to approve the cooperative bid for school lunch food supply?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Larry. Again, this is for our school lunch food supply, calling for food services through the cooperative bidding through Bosie's 2. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then the third bid, a motion, please, to approve the cooperative bid for natural gas supply?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Andrea, seconded by Larry, and again, this is through the Bosie's 2 purchasing service, and this is for our natural gas supply service for the year. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then we have a number of policies today, and we have three first reads that we're going to work through, so this is agenda item number 7, number 1. A motion, please, for approval, first read, policy 5410, purchasing non-instructional business operations.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Andrea. You'll notice that this is a seven-page policy that's been updated by Lou and the folks in the business office, and there's a number of items that are included in here that you've had a chance to take a look at. Remembering also to folks that this is first read, so if there are additional items in looking through this that we want to ask questions about further, correct, change, they will come back to us at a later meeting for approval as a second read. A number of items in here we would highlight. It includes language on purchasing recycled products, it includes clarifying competitive purchasing of goods and materials, it also includes a section on purchasing alternative formats for instructional materials to reflect, you know, growing use of non-traditional textbook materials. It also includes a section, newer section on environmentally sensitive cleaning and maintenance products, geographic preference in purchasing local agricultural products, construction contracts, which contains the items that we talked, the one area that we talked about earlier allowing audit committee to approve certain change orders. So there's quite a bit of update in here. Does anyone have any question or comment at this point in time in the first read? And remember, again, take a look through it if there's anything else, or anybody internally or a resident might have a question, they could provide that to us at a later date. So, all in favor of first read?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And first read on policy 7513, a motion, please, to approve that first read on administration of medication for students?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Julian, seconded by Marv. This has to do with changes in procedure and policy that revolve around, it's a six-page policy around administration of medications, and again, you'll see that there's a number of items in here that have been updated. Probably the most significant, and we had talked about it last year, was that the state now requires all school districts to provide feminine hygiene products in all restrooms and all buildings at no charge, so that is reflected here in policy also. Any questions or anything further from anyone on that one? Then all in favor of the first read, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then a motion, please, to approve policy 5660, first read, meal charging and prohibition against meal shaming.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Andrea, seconded by Karen. All right.
We talked about this, there's no opportunity to change the name of this, right?
We did talk about this, and let me explain, you'll notice for the general public, we received this policy suggested from our policy expert quite a while, well, not quite a while ago, a few months ago, as the state education department and the state legislature changed the law around what they have coined meal shaming, and it's been a very publicly discussed issue this year, where in some school districts and in some written policy, that students who don't have enough money in their lunch account are either denied a lunch, lunch is taken from them, they're, again, meal shamed. I hate that term, we've all discussed the term. It was the policy, however, that was sent down through all the policy services, contains the language as you see it in front of you. We discussed it with our auditor, we discussed it with Lou, audit committee discussed it with Lou, and I discussed it further with one of the representatives at New York State School Boards Association. The point made to me was, and my recommendation to the group, the state will be looking for this very quickly for all districts to have approved it. It seems to make the most sense to approve it as recommended and as written, not to stand out as individually rewriting something, even to change the title. So even though we don't meal shame and have not meal shamed, and we hate the connotation in the term, because it appears when you, in my view, approve this policy, that you're correcting a wrong that you may have done, I think the recommendation that I have to the group is that we go ahead with it as written and play by the rules, so that's-
But I think we're all on record as being very uncomfortable with the language.
We don't like the term, there's a number of terminology, there's a number of pieces of language in here that I think we would write differently, and, you know, to be frank, we may revisit down the road. You know, we'll see, there's a big rush around this because of the publicity around it, the deadlines, to have it approved by, officially posted in your buildings, and I believe it has to be posted even in lunchrooms moving forward, so, and your parent handbooks, and parents have to be made aware, so I'm guessing that there will be opportunity for updates and revisions as time goes on, so. So my recommendation is that we go ahead and approve the first read, we continue to look through it, and, but I don't envision at this point in time anything needing to be changed before a second read, so.
My comments aren't with regard to the content, it's just that I, you know, so, I think we all administratively and board are on the same page on that, and our food service people and, you know, our staff also, so.
All in favor then of the first read of the policy?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have second read on three items that we had discussed previously as first reads, the first one, the first two sort of go together, but we'll ask for approval separately. Policy 7242, a motion, please, to approve that on limited disclosure of student directory information?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Karen. Again, that's the, it actually is being amended to match what we're going to talk about here for 7243 on information for, provided to military recruiters and institutions of higher education. So it is revising that policy on limited information provided around students to make sure that those two policies all align with current regulations, so we have had no updates to this since the first read. Does anyone have anything further on that? All in favor of the second read?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then 7243, please, a motion to approve the second read, again, regarding students and military recruiters and institutions of higher education disclosure information, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Julian and seconded by Andrea. Again, this was done as it was required, because substantially revised the amendments to the law by the Every Student Succeeds Act as it relates to access to information for any higher education institution or military recruiters and then schools' requirements to provide that information. And again, we talked about that, and I haven't had anything further updated on that or anything further revision or anything came to us, so, does anyone have anything further than? We will ask for approval then of, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, 75, a motion, please, for approval of second read on 7512, students and student physicals?
So moved.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Marv. This was done, this was updated to reflect, again, changes both in state law, and there are a couple of elements of the SLA federally. There's a bit of a change on when student exams are required in terms of entry into grades, there's an update as far as pre-K and K, we've read it, there's a number of things in here right now, including also dental health, so it's a full revision and update. There's also a section, we've talked about this before, another speaking of items we don't like, district reporting of BMI and weight status, but it's very clear, you can see there what's required and what, that is exactly as the law is written, by the way, I did double-check on that because we have talked about this in the past. So, do we have any questions or comments?
I do have one word that needs to be struck.
Okay.
I'll just give it to Kim.
Okay, so just a-
It's not changing anything, it's just a poorly written sentence.
Okay. You can't have that. So, does anybody else have any question or comment on that? This is a seven-page policy on student physicals, a critical area of that, so. All right then, approval with the typographical change?
Want to hold on to that?
Yes.
Oh, that's what you're calling for, is a vote?
Correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were moving on to the next one.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry.
With the change that Julian made, striking that an extra word.
I got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. You are keeping it straightforward and honest here this morning, Marv.
You bet.
I do appreciate someone paying attention, so that's a really good thing.
He's the enforcer.
He's got a T-tight, he's got to get out of here. A motion, please, then, for approval of second read of policy 6212, personnel certification and qualifications?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Julian. You might recall, this is, this was revised to reflect the switch to more online verification of credentials and certifications for teachers and staff, and nothing new has come our way on this, I think this is more of a pro forma thing. Anybody have any question or comment? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Could I ask a question here? In the past, and I may have to look on my shelves at home, we were always given a book of policies, okay? I realize, you know, we were always-
You want a book of policies?
I handed, we were handed, we had a whole notebook, and every time a change was made, we would be, we would get it, and they were supposed to put it in, it was a real large pain, all right, to do. What I want to know is, is there a place where we can each get, it's probably online, yes? All right. But what I want to do is, I want to be sure that all of us has either access or has it in our personal files, so, okay, sometimes we get a question.
Well, our entire policy book-
Yes.
Is updated and online on the website, number one. We have-
I have a hard copy of it.
I don't want a hard copy.
Well, let's just clarify for folks who may want to see. Kim maintains a hard copy in central office for anyone who would want to see that, the actual full book, the old binder, but the online is updated as soon as we make the final vote, and that goes through the process.
I realize that, but I guess what I was trying to do was clarify for Christina and anybody else-
Sure, absolutely.
That, you know, we can have access, because oftentimes, not often, so once in a while I get a question, and I have to say, let me think.
Well, I tell you, and, you know, Marv, you raise a good point, and I bring this up sometimes with a resident who may have a question, and we do it a lot in the training that we do for new board members around the county, is suggest to people to look through, and it's not a bad idea for board members from time to time, you go through the policy manual online, click on the topics, and just take a quick perusal through them.
And that's recently been updated, the way we present that online, it's, I feel like it's much easier to search for specific policies and look for certain language, if you don't know the number of the policy or where it's-
And you can word search too, type search to find it.
It's a much better system than it was.
Yep, no problem, that's a good point, thank you. All right then, we have, we also have in this current meeting cycle, executive summary budget status report from Lou, and also the treasurer's report ending May 31st from Lou and Dahlia. May we have a motion to approve the executive summary and the budget status report, please?
So moved.
By Andrea, seconded by Larry. Does anyone have any questions of Lou, or any questions or comment on that?
Again, I'm going to make a comment that, this isn't, we're not going back to this, but in years past, we used to spend many, many minutes at these meetings with those documents being discussed, and not, I'm not suggesting that at all, I just want people to know where they are and where they can access them.
And that's a really good point, and we, we as a board, or the board at the time would say, we had discussed that since these are given to us well ahead of time, and we read through them, we have a fully functioning audit committee that regularly meets that reviews, that our time in meetings was better spent by not sort of having Lou stand up and retell, but all of the material is online, if a resident wants to take a look at current account, if you will, information, it's updated, it's actually part of the agenda, so it's there prior to the meeting, and certainly they can ask a question of Lou or Dahlia or any of us.
Yeah, and I want to say, it is in, well, it is presented in a manner that is very understandable, all right?
Correct.
If anybody wants to look at hard numbers, they can look at hard numbers, but the way it's presented in terms of graphs and what's been spent and what's been allocated for certain things, it's all there and done very well.
Thank you, sir. The remaining business item, unless we'll check in amidst, if anybody has anything else, we have our consent agenda this evening, or this afternoon, this morning, this today. A motion, please, to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Larry. A number of items in the consent agenda, a couple of those include designations that we talked about a little bit earlier, and then there also is a fundraising activity being approved in there. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Before I ask Dr. McGowan if he has anything to add, I will, since we had to work through some pro forma stuff there, let's officially and formally welcome Christina Lee as our new board member. This is official first meeting day, although you can tell the community has started a number of activities in terms of onboarding and interviewing and learning and welcome. We're happy to have you join us, and we'll sign oaths of office today, we'll all be officials, so thank you very much, and we look forward to the new organization. To those that are here supporting you and welcoming you also. So let's turn over to Dr. McGowan.
Just a few quick items, again, welcome to Christina and thank you to her parents and kids.
In our consent agenda, we had a personnel package that we approved, but you may want to-
Yeah, so a couple of items. One is congratulations to Maureen Jeffries, who will be a new Assistant Principal at Council Rock, which you approved this morning in the consent agenda. We're very excited. Maureen is a former Council Rock teacher, returning back to Brighton, we're thrilled, a very, very talented person. We also had a really very competitive process with excellent candidates, we're excited about the candidate pool, excited about many of the candidates, and thrilled to be welcoming Maureen back, as is Mr. Tappan, so they'll get started working together very, very shortly. A few other items, our blueprint day discussion, we had, I think, just a great, great planning day that you were a part of, and we appreciate that, along with 50 or so community members, staff members, great representation from parents and staff and our leadership team and all of you, where we worked through each of the priority areas and identified the whats, and many strategies came forward from each of those groups. I also thought the digging into the thought exchange information and data, the way it was done in partners to really, essentially the analysis is done by the group, it's not provided, it's not provided in a way that we're summarizing or taking all of our impressions of the data, but it's sort of almost crowdsourcing the analysis of the data, it's a very organic and different way to get at it, and I thought they did a really nice job of walking us through that. They also will provide us with summary reports of the data from their perspective analyzing it, and their perspective is essentially summarizing, again, the community perspective, because everybody rated people's thoughts, so as soon as we have that information and can present it well, we'll put it out to the community and make sure we're following up. It also gives us the opportunity to go back in and offer administrative comments to kind of the hot topics and the things that came up, so it shows people exactly where we took many of their comments, and I refer to them as the low-hanging fruit, things like cleanliness of bathrooms, okay, great, this is what we did, thanks for that feedback, this is exactly what we did to address that, and there were several of those items, things that we didn't expect, that given this kind of format and forum, we were able to uncover, so really excited about that. The next step for us, all of you as a group and the leadership team is to meet again in August, dig through the whats and determine the how and the when, and we'll have then in late August the meeting, the goal approval meeting that you have, where we share that information out, the result of that work, so. Great work, and thanks to all of the community members that participated. All right, just a couple of quick comments about, the farmer's market continues to go really, really well, but so the community members are aware, a large delivery of roofing product for the construction project was delivered early, and in these types of projects, when you can get materials is when you need to accept the materials, or they may not come when you need them to put up on the roof, and they were parked relatively close to the building, which has interrupted a little bit of the schematic of the farmer's market, and they've been able to adjust. We really appreciate the farmer's market adjusting, community members adjusting that, it's a very important activity for us to be hosting, and we appreciate everybody's patience with that. I don't think it's been a huge disruption, but want to make sure people understand that that's the reason why that's a change, and that's why we had to do that, and that it's located near the building, because when they do the roof, they need the materials on the spot to bring up to the roof, so that's, that's why that happened. Any other construction updates, Lou, that you'd like to give to the community, or anything on the change orders? Sure.
What comment we can make, as Lou is coming up to the podium, the track and the tennis courts and the turf field are progressing nicely, and the comments around the blue end zones and the blue colors are very, very positive, so that was a great choice, I think, so far.
Yeah, I would please report, the summer construction activities are on schedule. We have had several change orders related to unsuitable soils on the turf field and the tennis courts in particular, significant change orders that, you know, we processed through the audit committee, so those are coming through.
Lou, pardon my interruption, but could you explain, unsuitable soils does not mean contaminated soils, it means just substrate and support structure?
Right, the density, so actually for the tennis court, what they did is they load up a semi, and they drive it across, and they look at how far down it's, so it's compaction testing, and how much more stone that they need to add versus the bid specification, so that's how they test for unsuitable soils, is really meaning the weight bearing or compaction testing is what it is. So that's gone, that has added some cost to the project that was part of our contingency, so we're still relatively on budget related to that scope of, scope of work. The one thing with the turf field that I just want the community to be aware of, is once the carpet is laid down, they have paved the track too, but the track, the track needs to cure for 28 days, so that is still going to be a construction site, even though we may not see as much work going on over these next 30 days, so just need to be aware of that. It is still an active construction site, there will be work going in there, but it may look like it's ready to be played on, it won't be, so just, just for, then we'll need to probably communicate that, so people understand that. But other than that, we're happy with where things are going with the schedules, particularly this summer. this summer, probably, most people only saw that crane on July 5th, that was successful pick of our chiller unit, that was a significant portion of that project, and that was a success. They will be dropping the new crane in within the next couple of weeks, so that building will begin, will again be shut down for all staff, and all, really all persons, while we're dropping that new chiller unit into that space, so.
I'd like to point out, we're going to actually lower it and not drop it at all, but the construction terms...
Construction terms.
They call it dropping, I get much more comfortable with lowering.
But in terms of community entertainment value, will you let us know, can we, can we inform people when the crane will be here, that activity will be...
No, not likely, actually. I would look for big in the sky, but we will not be notifying, so, yeah.
Crane day, crane alert.
Well, good news to report, with the larger project, that's with the state education department, still pending review and approval, we have gotten, we've received some architectural comments back on the rehabilitation, not yet on the, not rehabilitation, modernization portion of the project, we have not seen comments back for Council Rock yet. We are utilizing the third-party review system to try to get that through the queue quicker, with the goal of being able to bid it earlier in the more optimal environment, but we are concerned as we're closely watching market conditions and the impact of tariffs, and how that's going to impact labor market and pricing of materials, especially with the new construction. So, there'll be more to report on that in the coming weeks.
Great, thanks, so.
Thanks for the update, we appreciate it.
And that's, you know, thanks to Lou and the entire construction management team, campus, the architects, I think things are moving along really well, and they've been very, very responsive, but, construction outside, the track and the turf, I'd say, generally speaking, I think is ahead of schedule, which is not to get people's hopes up too high, because there's so many different variables between now and then, but, my point in bringing it up is people's patience at the end of the year with us getting on early to begin the construction, we really appreciate it, because it has made a big difference, and, you know, the weather contingencies, you cannot really predict very well either, so we're in good shape, and if people are anxious about fall sports and being able to get on there around homecoming, those kinds of things, we seem to be moving in a really good direction that way, so. And all getting excited about the crane, we would love for people if they happen to show up, but I don't want to create too big a crowd out there. It's very safe, and they do a great job of keeping a good perimeter for that, but, not that hundreds of people will come, but, I mean, I'm kind of, you know, a big boy myself who likes to stand and get a good view, but, no, we, we've really excited about that too, and they've done a great job.
When is that going to happen, roughly? Do you know, you don't know?
Don't know the day, no.
Just rely on Twitter, somebody going by sees it one day, and cranes up.
Yeah, and then it'll be...
Bring my grins.
Be like a flash moment.
Well, it will be, it will be hard to miss when it happens.
It is very hard to miss, for sure.
Through corners, through the day.
Well, and the other problem is too, so, things come up around that, it was interesting the day when I was out there, they'll plan for it for a day, but it depends which components can go on which day and what preparation they have done, and so it's not always like an event that we can necessarily predict, so, or things come up along the way. And then, just a quick comment, that hiring is moving along really well too, we're nearly fully hired, which is great, most of that actually was done in June. Helps us, we think, attract the best candidates, but also do the most amount of planning, mentoring, and preparation throughout the summer, so people hit the ground running when the time comes. And Debbie is right there, Dr. Baker, if you could give us a quick update on the fact that professional development, curriculum development, and our summer programs, we are rocking and rolling.
We definitely are, I was smiling thinking, you know, a lot of you all think it's summer because of the weather, but all you have to do is walk up and down these halls or in our buildings to know that work is actually continuing. So right now, through the summer, with regards to professional development, curriculum development, we have over 110 different projects going on, different sessions. I can say virtually every one of our staff members are involved in some capacity within those, some being involved more than others. I think highlights really center around technology and all the technology training, you heard me mention that and talk about that ongoing last year, and that's happening as we speak. We're running eight different sessions for our staff with regards to technology training. Another big area that we've been working on is around curriculum development, aligning to what they call a UBD, or understanding by design. We had our first institute two weeks ago, and over 70 teachers coming, working teams to develop the rigorous curriculum that, you know, again, it's all coming together with regards to the plans of the blueprint and what our intent was, while there's curriculum design that's happening that's going to get our students there, so we're really, really excited about that. And then, as Kevin mentioned, you know, yesterday, our summer school started, so we've got about 100 students at the high school, another 100 students between Council Rock and French Road, who we are summer programming for, and all as well in the world of curriculum development and professional development.
Great, thanks for the update, Debbie, we appreciate it.
Thank you, that's all for me.
Wonderful, thank you. Board members, anything else further?
Is our next meeting the 14th here at 9:00, the goal setting? I thought, I guess I'm confused, I thought we met in somewhere else.
We do, this is the next board meeting to approve the...
Yeah, that's our retreat work, but our next board meeting, this is the next official board meeting, so.
Thank you.
As Marv mentions, our next official board meeting is the morning of August 14th, and that will be a goal-setting day, and sort of a workshop, more of a workshop meeting that morning, yep. Anything further, anyone else?
Can I just say, and it seems so long ago, that graduation was just spectacular this year, our speakers were fantastic, and it was very exciting to see every one of those kids cross the stage. It was, it was very, I mean, up until a lot of graduations at this point, it was a very special graduation, and I just wanted to comment on that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
It was.
You know, so that's like our culminating, I mean, obviously, event academically, K-12 for the institution, and it was a wonderful night, Arthur Hightower, the speaker, was incredible, the student speakers were incredible, performers the same, it was really a beautiful, beautiful evening, and for so many kids walking across the stage, you know, who have all different paths to get there, it was a really, really exciting night, it really was.
And I would add too, in terms of thanks, I think, you know, Kevin, you detailed, but the blueprint day this year, I think we always have a tendency to think, we love the work that we do, we love the work that goes on in the district, and we always have a tendency to say, well, this was the best one ever, but I do think that blueprint day was the best one thus far, for a lot of reasons, it was great dialogue in the room and at individual tables, we had a very large group of parents from the district, who I want to thank on behalf of the board for devoting their day to that, and a lot of them were new to processes, you know, in the district, and provided new feedback and perspectives and things like that, so I thought it was a great, and looking, you know, as we begun to digest the feedback from it internally for you, a lot of great conversation, which is what it's designed to do, is to feed the process, right? So I thought it was one of our better ones too, so.
Right, and for example, Mark and I were at a table with two staff members that have been a part of this for a long time, and then two parents and a staff member who have not, and the conversation was just fantastic, and the different, the different thinking, the pushing us to different places, the diversity of thought, it was really exciting to be a part of the dialogue.
Yep, so, okay, great. Then what I would ask for is a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the matter of employment of specific individuals, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you everyone, we are adjourned.
We've got to sign.